We acknowledge that the land on which we gather is the traditional unceded territory of the Mi'kmaq First Nation. And under call to order, I just want you to look at the screen. I was fortunate to drop by the University Sustainable Engineering Department on Friday for their Sustainable Engineering Design Expo 2024. And through Nick Walker down in Environment Sustainability, the city partnered with five first-year groups and one second-year group with the Faculty of Sustainability Design Engineering to work on design projects ranging from a solar transit shelter, tree protection and watering, and a crow deterrent. Okay, that's a good one. The projects were presented at the Annual Student Design Expo held this past Friday, April 19th. And these three young engineers, to my left is Sabine Wyatt, Elleté Quebecois, premier NA at the University de Lille de Prince de Bois. Next to her is Amber Kalbeck and Ava Dikstra. And there is our future when you look at three young engineers going through the UPEI Sustainable Engineering Program. I see that group representative of Canada's future and not just in Canada but worldwide. And the project given to the group was to design a solution to protect the bark of newly planted trees. You'll see samples on the table in the photo. The design had to be biodegradable, low cost, and aesthetically pleasing. The group came up with an idea for biodegradable flowerbed kit that wraps around the tree and provides a buffer between the trimmers and the tree. So big thanks to Ava, Amber, and Sabine. And I think that's very telling of UPEI, Dr. Keith, and I'm glad that you're here. And I would like to just also follow up with another presentation that took place last Thursday. It was at the Shellotown Library Learning Center. And it was a presentation that was put on by the Catherine Hennessy Lecture Series. And it was about urban design chaired by Kim Devine, Claire Nantes, Donna Miller Ayton, our own Donna Miller Ayton, Natalie Mun, and Silva Steika. So all five were part of making that presentation the other night with Ken Kelly, and it was an excellent presentation. So any declarations of conflict of interest? Counselor Beck?
Item D, under item 4D, approval of community grants. I have a conflict on the Blooming House grant as my daughter-in-law is a member of that board. And I'd also declare a conflict on Meals on Wheels because I'm a volunteer with Meals on Wheels, so.
And that's under 4C?
It's under 4D, under the approval of community grants. So I don't want to vote on, I don't want to, I know they're going in as a package, but I don't want to be part of, I don't know how that works.
That's good. No, as soon as they, 4C. I think when it comes to a vote, you can just step aside. Any others? Approval of the agenda. Counselor McCabe, did you want to add something or delete something or put something on hold?
Yes, I do, actually, Your Worship. I'd like to, I'm asking if we could probably defer the speed hump, temporary speed hump policy that we were going to put on tonight. Talking with the manager today, we feel that there's probably some more information that could come to council so that it's not so much of a discussion after. They're working on trying to get the numbers for what they're going to recommend based on the criteria they had put in, as well as what they would recommend based on previous placement of the speed humps and the new formula that they're looking at. It's just going to help us rather than spending a lot of time discussing what we think and where. It'll give us a little bit more information to help us have a more informed conversation. So I'm asking to have that pulled from our agenda for the meeting.
No. Second, okay. That's it? With the amendment to the agenda, mover moved by Counselor McKinnon, second by Counselor Ramsey, all those in favor? Counselor Duran?
In favor.
Yeah, okay. So first presentation, we have the group from the University of Prince Edward Island. And we have the university president, interim president, President Dr. Greg Keith. And next to Dr. Greg Keith is Dean of Medicine, Dr. Preston Smith. We have Myrtle Jenkins, Myrtle Jenkins-Smith representing the Alumni Association, Alumni and Development Association. We have Paul Young, who is the COO for the UPEI Medical School, Dr. Alicia Myrnahan, and our own Heather Howard. So we'll let, Myrtle, do you want to start first? Thanks.
Good evening. I just wanted to say thank you very much for giving the UPEI Faculty of Medicine opportunity to present and share all the exciting things that are happening with the new med school. So I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Greg Keith, and thank you very much.
Just before I move on, I did forget Dr. Herb Dickerson, who's been with this medical school right from the beginning, maybe dating back many, many years, but he took the, made the drive from Ollary or Alberton all the way down here to be part of this presentation. So he's expecting a lot from you, Dr. Preston.
Last time I was here was on July the 10th, 2019.
When we passed the resolution.
And your group, your council unanimously adopted the idea of supporting the medical school in Charmian at UPEI.
And we still support it. Okay.
And we're going to find out how much. So we do have a slide deck, so that'll be coming up on your screen. And as His Worship mentioned, my name is Greg Keith. I'm the interim president at UPEI. I'm going to begin with a land acknowledgement. And I acknowledge that the land on which UPEI is located is the traditional and unceded territory of the Mi'kmaq people, known to them as Avaquik. And it's in the traditional district of Mi'kmaq. And we are very proud to work, study, and learn on Mi'kmaq territory. My job tonight is really just as, by way of introduction, to our most recent hire, which is our Dean of the Faculty of Medicine. We are extremely fortunate to have been able to have Dr. Preston Smith, native Islander, return to PEI to help lead this process. Dr. Smith has an incredible pedigree in medical education, having been involved with the development of medical residency programs initially in Moncton and then moved to become the Senior Associate Dean at the Faculty of Medicine in Halifax at Dalhousie, where he was involved both with the start of the medical residency programs here in PEI, as well as the regional campus at St. John, New Brunswick for Dalhousie Medicine. And after that, he moved to the University of Saskatchewan, where he was Dean of Medicine there for 10 years. So such an incredible hire for us at UPEI. We're very excited to have him join us the 1st of April. So I'm going to turn the floor to Dr. Smith.
Good evening, and thank you very much for the opportunity to present to you about UPI's Faculty of Medicine and medical education in general, something I'm very passionate about. I've got a bit of a historical or recent historical perspective on medical education in Canada. If you go back to 1990, we had 16 medical schools in 16 big cities. There is a slightly larger representation of residency programs in family medicine. There might have been 25 sites across the country in 1990. But, you know, early in 2000, it was clearly becoming evident there was a massive shortage and a building shortage of doctors in this country. In 2000, 7,000 people showed up in an arena in Prince George in northern British Columbia. And they were demanding a solution to the healthcare problem that they were facing at that time. So a new model of medical education was brought to the table by UBC, and they started up campuses in Prince George and in Victoria. Maybe not a big challenge in Victoria, but in Prince George, it was an amazing change and totally revolutionary in the country as to how we approached medical education. Today, there's 40 medical students enter medical school every year in Prince George. They only have 70,000 in that city and 300,000 in a population base, and yet they're training 40 medical students a year. You know, it continued. Sherbrooke started the University of Moncton campus in 2007. I was part of the medical community in New Brunswick and the English-speaking part of New Brunswick that lobbied and successfully achieved support to have Dalhousie Medicine in New Brunswick, which I had the pleasure of working on. But really, the floodgates opened as medical education spread across the country, from traditional ivory towers to almost every center in the country. So now there's family medicine residency programs in over 150 locations, including Shellotown. But Yarmouth to Nunavut to Fort St. John, and I am serious, Nunavut supports a family medicine residency program where they do all two years of that program in the Arctic. By 2025, there'll be 20 medical schools, but they'll be spread over 40 campuses. Currently, Rimiski, St. Catherine's, Regina, I can go on. But there's also planning for Lethbridge, Grand Prairie, Prince Albert, Cape Breton. They're all coming online as new. Now, what's fascinating is that these programs train great doctors. They actually have the same or better scores on national licensing exams. They have stronger clinical skills. And actually, they are standardized psychological testing. They have more empathy at the end of medical school than students that train in a big city. So it's a great model. It's been moving to smaller and smaller locations. It's literally, it will literally be everywhere in Canada by next year. And this is the new normal of medical education. Today, 30% of doctors that graduate from medical school are trained outside a traditional ivory tower setting, and that number is just going to grow. So I'm going to turn things over to Paul Young, and we're going to tag team a little bit on this presentation, and so over to Paul.
Very good. Thank you, Dr. Smith. This is not new by any means. You hear the challenges that exist right across the country and certainly on PEI, challenges with recruitment and retention of physicians, especially in rural areas. Newly trained doctors have higher care needs and therefore carry lower patient loads than previous generation of physicians. And of course, there's an increasing need for physicians on PEI. Our population is getting older, as I mentioned, increasing care needs. And of course, our systems are growing and changing, requiring more physicians. PEI has an incredible talent amongst its youth to become exceptional physicians. Many pursue entry but are unsuccessful for a number of reasons, many giving up and some seeking training offshore. Individuals, as we know, who train in home areas are most likely to practice in their home areas. So why Memorial? So partnership with an award-winning school like Memorial University gives us an immediate access to an established curriculum and 50 years of experience in generalist training, indigenous health, and rural medicine, and certainly aligns with PEI's vision and needs. And for context, in 2022, Memorial's Faculty of Medicine was awarded the Keith Award for the 10th time in the last 20 years by the Society of Rural Physicians of Canada for having the largest number of physicians practicing in rural Canada for the most recent 10 years after graduation. So why UPEI and why Memorial? When we look at UPEI, and specifically Memorial, in terms of what made them such a great partner, is that we had the opportunity to not only just be a regional campus and evolve into a joint medical degree program, but they allowed us to bring the best parts of our institution to medical education. So strengths in areas of planetary health can certainly have and have already informed Memorial's medical education program, but strengths at UPEI in health-based programming such as nursing, climate change, paramedicine, psychology, veterinary medicine, and so on and so forth. There are also research strengths that can be capitalized and leveraged in collaborations and by medical, community health, and interprofessional health education fronts.
Thank you, Paul. So as Paul has alluded, establishing medical school and increasing the enrollment to 20 is doubling the access to medical education for students from PEI. And that is absolutely critical, and there's little doubt there's many talented students on PEI that will succeed in medicine because this program becomes available. The evidence is clear that training at home means enhances recruitment and retention. And of those family medicine sites across the country, I mentioned, you can just go and look at the surrounding that town and find the graduates located in those communities. The evidence is that both undergrad and residency training contribute to that recruitment and retention. So 20 PEI residents, one indigenous learner as a designated seat. And, you know, the focus really will be on training for PEI, training with a heavy emphasis on primary care through family medicine, of course, in our profession, and what we call general specialties. So general internal medicine, general psychiatry, general anesthesia. This is, you know, builds on Memorial's curricular strengths as well as the response to the needs on the island. The credential will initially be a Memorial degree as we start with their accreditation, but we are going to work with them to develop a joint curriculum and a joint accreditation and UPEI's logo on the parchment with our graduates of the future. The whole process around establishing a real regional campus is now quite well-defined. As I've said, I was there to start Dalhousie Medicine in New Brunswick. I established a full four years in Regina. I'm fully familiar with all the steps necessary to achieve accreditation in partnership with Memorial, having done it several times. And so we are well on our way to achieving that kind of accreditation success. Back to Paul.
That's actually you. Yes. You can call that.
So as I said, we've had excellent, oops, my slides mixed up. Sorry, folks. Yeah, so we've already covered that. We've covered the accreditation, so, yeah, the milestones.
Perfect. No worries. So we'll chat a little bit about milestones. So, of course, we've been underway now for a good 20, 24 months. And it wasn't that long ago, about a year and a half, that myself, I was a team of one, and now we're into a team of 17, which is really exciting. We've seen tremendous progress made with accreditation. Infrastructure, of course, is ongoing. Those that are driving across University Avenue will see the shiny building that's up on campus, and we'll speak a little bit more about that in a few minutes. Community infrastructure planning and development is ongoing as well. So we're working very closely with Health PEI that is undergoing a series of master planning across the province, the rollout of the patient medical models. So a lot of really great work that's happening. We're one of the first jurisdictions that completed a health system capacity assessment, just an additional level of rigor that we've completed to really understand what our capacity challenges might be, but where the opportunities are within the province. As I mentioned, we've onboarded our senior leadership team. So we're certainly growing, which is really exciting. We have an incredibly diverse and talented skill set amongst our senior leadership team that is helping to move the work forward. As we've mentioned already, Dr. Smith has started within his role as Dean of Medicine. We can't certainly overemphasize just how tremendously fortunate we consider ourselves to have this man as part of our team, leading our path forward. Dr. Smith brings an incredible depth of experience in medical education, in health system knowledge, and national context to help inform what we're doing. And then we also just recently had our first faculty academic appointment, Dr. Joe Gordon. That is, it's a kind of a really unique approach to how we're developing our faculty within the Faculty of Medicine, and where we have an opportunity to look at where we can partner with other faculties. And this is a great example, where we have a tremendous PhD in Joe Gordon that will work and will be a shared resource with the Atlantic Veterinary College, do some research with AVC, but also spend half his time with the Faculty of Medicine, leading some work in the anatomy labs. So just one of the many ways that we will collaborate and integrate within the university So I'll stick a few minutes and just talk about the facility on campus. So we have 140,000 square foot facility, five-story building that's under construction on the north end of campus. It has a $91 million capital budget for the facility and equipment, and we are currently working towards a spring, early summer timeline for completion. Just a few pictures for context. Of course, on the left-hand side is a rendering of what the completed building will look like. Top right-hand corner is a drone footage of some developments, which, going back, were probably about six, eight weeks now from when that picture was taken. The glazing is almost complete around the building. It's incredible, the work that the facilities team and Bright Construction, our contractor, has been leading and driving forward for us. And the bottom right-hand corner is the old Island Coastal location on Belvedere. That's where our satellite offices are set up and where our team is growing into currently. That's where our satellite offices are set up and where our team is growing into currently. Well, take just a minute and just touch on the facility uh on campus. I think it's really important to note. So of course, the onsite campus facility will includes and will include the Faculty of Medicine or the medical school. Um, but there's much more beyond that that will be encompassed within the hundred and forty thousand square foot building. So one of the largest Health PEI patient medical homes will actually be housed in that building, in the Faculty of Medicine building, and will serve as a major training site for the medical uh doctor program, providing services to over ten thousand patients um to the broader community. Of course, we'll have a modern medical training facility, including state-of-the-art clinical simulation, clinical skills, anatomy suites um that certainly will benefit our uh our medical students, but also nursing, veterinarian, paramedicine, and professionals throughout the community, first responders, as well as um professional development uh and skills development for existing providers in our health system. Um, we, we had some of our team travel across the country, connecting with all the med schools to look in terms of the different technology components that these med schools have, and they brought those ideas back. So we'll be very uniquely positioned in a number of different ways, one of which is that we will have what we believe is the best, the best of all medical schools in and at UPEI, um, offering a very unique experience for our medical learners. As well, we'll have the expanded Doctor Psychology Clinic located in that building. We'll have the expanding and provincial ADHD clinic. We'll also have additional classroom space within that building. Um, and what's really unique um and and incredible about that building is, of course, all the various interprofessional professions that will be learning together, collaborating together, growing together, and eventually entering the health system together. So this will create a very unique opportunity for all these uh students to learn um and experience interprofessional education and interdisciplinary learning and teaching together uh before they enter the health system.
So um, one of the things that I always talk about in medical education is the fact that you live in two worlds in medical education. You have firm, one foot firmly planted on campus and in the world of the university, and the other foot firmly planted in the healthcare system. And, you know, that's why deans of medicine love their job, because they get to go to work at a university and stay in healthcare. Um, and uh, so, so for me, the work that's already been done on system integration is critical to the success of of this medical school. Um, and um, and, you know, so there are, as as the slide says, a strategic health system integration committee in place with uh lots of the players you'd expect participating. Certainly, um, the uh work with the health authority um is uh from from my perspective is 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 unique in that I am going to be uh point eight or four days a week on paper, um, at least, um, as dean of medicine. And one day a week, I am the chief academic officer for Health PEI and a member of the executive leadership team of Health PEI. And certainly very happy to join that group. They're enthusiastic about the the medical school, certainly the new CEO is highly supportive of of developing the medical school, as she said publicly. So really working hard at at integrating the healthcare system uh with the education system uh for the training of future doctors of PEI. To that regard, Paul mentioned um the capacity report that was done by Spindel. And I I throw this slide up from the Spindel report in part to um, I think, dispel some misinformation. Uh, Spindel was creating a mathematical model of how you, how you staff a medical school. And so they picked a number and and developed their numbers based on twenty percent. And and that was useful from a, from a mathematical modeling perspective, but that's not actually how medical schools work. Medical schools work with a distribution of 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 doctors um that is shaped like this curve um where you have a few people like myself, eighty percent academic and at the university. Um, and then, but but the vast majority of the teaching is done by people that spend less than five percent of their time with the medical school. So they took twenty percent as a as a number to target. But if we got, uh, if we, we actually got twice as many doctors involved in medical education, we would be down to ten percent. We got three times as many, we'd be down to like seven percent. So, so the normal distribution of that involvement in the medical school is the curve. I I actually asked one of my colleagues, Alicia Mon Murnahan, to briefly talk about her um experience with clinical teaching.
Um, thank you. So that twenty percent from the Spindel report has unfortunately been interpreted as, oh, no, I, I don't want my family doctor to get involved because that means they'll see twenty percent less people. And that simply is not the case. So while we have historically seen some people leave clinical medicine for leadership positions such as DVA and Health PEI and public health or politics, the majority of physicians that will be providing medical education do not reduce their clinical workload by twenty percent just because they have a student. Um, and in reality, I'm an emergency doc by trade. If I say, say twenty percent, uh, twenty people on a night shift, if I have a learner, I actually can see twenty-five or thirty. And when I worked in Ottawa for ten years, we had three learners every shift. And on those night shifts, I would see forty-five or fifty people at night. So they actually contributed to the care, to patient care. So we want to be very clear that being involved in the medical school does not reduce your clinical workload by twenty percent.
Thank you for that clarification.
The Spindel report actually provided with lots of useful information. And and so not to take away the report because they did what they were asked to do. Uh, but but it 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 created this impression that all the doctors that had something to do with the medical school were going to be taking a day off the week from their clinical work. And that is simply not the way it works in medical schools. Um, and, you know, I, you know, like Alicia, I can speak from personal experience. Um, you know, certainly, uh, I'd see the same number of patients with uh with a third or fourth year medical student and go home a half an hour later, forty-five minutes later. Um, with, I, when I had a second year resident with me, I went home thirty, forty-five minutes early, the same number of patients. So it 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 varies according to the level of learner, um, experience of the teacher, and lots of other things. But it certainly is not the reduction that has been talked about. So there's other recommendations in the Spindel report that just emphasize, again, working in collaboration with the health authority, or in this case, Health PEI, finding mechanisms for compensating doctors for their time that doesn't take away from their income. In other words, uh, people that are going to put substantial amounts of time in the medical school, um, they need compensation structures that account for that. And again, the partnerships that are necessary. And so we've already had conversations, obviously, our big partner is Memorial. I've already had conversations. One of the Spindel recommendations was developing a council of maritime deans uh where we could talk about sharing resources as time goes forward. And both the dean of Memorial and the dean of Dalhousie are supportive of doing that. So, so what are the risks? Well, the real risk is that, you know, our neighbors across the water are going to do this. And I have no doubt that they'll absolutely succeed. Um, and they're doing it in Cape Breton for thirty students. Again, similar number of doctors, um, you know, population base is not significantly different. Actually, on Cape Breton Island, it'll be lower population base, but they will be using Ananquinish and other parts of Northern Nova Scotia as well. Um, but, you know, so our neighbors are going to do this. We can do it. In fact, if we don't do it, we'll be the only significant jurisdiction in Canada that's not doing it. We know that medic school graduates today, eighty percent of them want to have a role in teaching, and some of them want to have a role in research. Uh, so if you're being recruited today, you can come uh to Moncton, Fredericton, and now Sydney, or rural areas around those communities and be asked to participate in the medical education program. If you come to PEI, you won't have the same opportunity to participate in a medical education program. It's actually a recruitment incentive in the long run. You know, few doctors can do a hundred percent clinical work. It is hard work, uh, it is emotionally draining work. And most doctors want that other aspect to their career, to add variety, to add stimulation. There's also a great deal of reward that comes from training the next generation. But there's also um stimulus to actually think about why you do things and think about how you might want to change things when students are asking you every day, why did you do it that way? Or or did you know that there's a new drug for that? Um, and so the medical students provide that academic stimulus uh to to their, to physicians. So, so, I mean, you know, the opportunity is is obviously to embrace this, and that's, and that's why I jumped at this job. This was just a really, really cool opportunity to grow medical education on PEI, to do it in a way that served Islanders best. And I do believe the partnership with Memorial is a great way to start that. I do believe that our patient medical home model here actually is going to create a unique way. Uh, you've got to remember that Toronto Metropolitan, York, and Simon Fraser are all trying to figure out how to start up new medical schools that specialize in family medicine. And we're going to show them how to do it because we're going to do it in the existing patient medical home model that exists here in PEI, I think, is a unique opportunity to train a unique kind of doctor that really serves PEI. Um, there's no doubt that um the um, you know, emphasis on Ha- Islanders having an equal ability to go to medical school is important and a priority. Um, there's also economic benefits. In established medical schools that have, you know, sizable research program, there's three dollars um return on every dollar invested in terms of economic stimulus that that's associated with a medical school. So, you know, lots of wonderful reasons why we should be doing this. And, you know, really no alternatives. Um, Brunswick's expanding their campus of Dalhousie, Memorial's expanding, Dalhousie's adding thirty seats in Cape Breton. All of the medical schools in our, that that traditionally have supplied doctors for PEI are fully occupied trying to expand for their own province. And if we're, we're, we are now at a point, and I, and I, I say, they say this uh excitedly as an Islander, you know, the economic growth and population growth that you've seen here on PEI have brought PEI to the stage where it is able to, but also must, train its own doctors to ensure medical care for Islanders in the future. Thank you.
Dr. Preston Smith, thank you very much. Paul, Dr. Keith, Dr. Herb Dickerson. And I know I have Dr. Alicia Murnahan, thank you for your connection to the Spindel report. I just go to a CBC article. Carrie Campbell, CBC News, report outlines how many doctors will be needed to teach at UPEI's medical school. And this was reported in December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. For some specialties, it could be more than PEI has fueling, more than PEI has fueling concerns about added strain in the system. So I'm glad you brought up the Spindel report because the Spindel report has been spun many ways. Today, I think you've presented it in a a more understanding, especially from a medical professional background from all, all of you i- in here tonight. Are there any questions from council members? Council twill.
I want to thank you for your presentation, uh, very informative. And especially the um, you know, the, the, the attempt to eliminate some of the misconceptions with respect to the report. And and I appreciate, I certainly appreciate you being here. Um, I supported every resolution to uh make sure that City Council uh was fully on board with the new medical school. And, you know, a reference was made to Doc, Dr. Herb Dickerson. After all, it was his vision. Well, thank you, Dr. Dr. Dickerson. Um, just a couple of things. A decision was made by the province to drop um the residency with Dalhousie. Is that an advantage or a disadvantage?
So, so, so currently, there's, you know, an excellent uh family medicine residency program um that that runs under the accreditation and and direction of Dalhousie University. So this has happened before in Canada, especially um the best example is, of course, the Northern Ontario School of Medicine. And so at the time that the Northern Ontario School of Medicine started in two thousand and four, um, two of the southern medical schools in Ontario had family medicine residency programs in Sudbury and Thunder Bay. So what happened over, over time was Northern Ontario School of Medicine took over running those programs. Um, it's very confusing to a medical community to have two universities trying to run programs in the same city. The curriculums are different, the assessment forms are different, the paperwork is different, the IT requirements are different. So to be able to have have a community running one with one university is what most people strive for. And and even in Ontario, where there's now seven, soon to be eight medical schools, um, they, they, they have rough boundaries that they, they kind of respect each other's space for those very reasons. So that's what happened in Northern Ontario. So there, actually, there has been no decision made to cancel the the program in in Dalhousie. Um, but it is my assumption that we will develop post-grad programs. Uh, some of those programs will be in areas besides family medicine. There will be new programs under our accreditation. But it's also my assumption that we would assume the con, the, the, the family medicine residency site, seats that Dalhousie's providing and do them under UPI accreditation and expand those. There's five to be seven this year. There should be twelve. Um, and so we really, as UPI, would be best positioned to take that program eventually and and grow it.
Council twill.
You referenced the medical school in Cape Breton. I was trying to listen as best I can. Um, and I wouldn't mind if you would please just outline uh the differences and the similarities. If you could just give us a thumbnail sketch on that.
So Cape Breton will be a regional campus of Dalhousie. It will be the same as Dalhousie Medicine of Brunswick, and it will remain that for the foreseeable future. Um, the um campus that we're starting starts as a regional campus, we're using almost entirely the Memorial curriculum. And we are going to develop a partnership, further that partnership with Memorial to develop a joint curriculum and have that accredited jointly. And that is going to be a unique model. It is going to give us the ability in the long run to um uh tailor the curriculum specifically to PEI and 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 take the best and keep the best that's in the Memorial curriculum. And and at the same time, Memorial will be able to um gain from what we can contribute to the curri- to their curriculum. So it is a unique model. We will eventually be, um, you know, in that jointly accredited curriculum with, as I say, UPI and the parchment. Cape Breton will always be a program designed and 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 run, run at a hollow pax, but but in in place in in Sydney.
Dr. Beck, no questions?
I'd just like to follow up that I've had two students, MUN students, first-year medical students, Emma Campbell, Emma Campbell and Grant Walters that were, came by over the last couple of weeks. And then this Friday, I'm meeting with Riley Smith, another first-year student at MUN in the medical school. And both Grant and Emma are very much looking forward to a new medical school on Prince Edward Island because they want to stay in the region, they want to stay on Prince Edward Island. If that medical school was open today, they would be there. I think Grant told me he was in the waiting lineup, three years. This was his third year. And uh, we get a critical situation in this country for doctors. Now, if we had a critical situation for infrastructure, do you think the engineering schools would be limited in the number of engineers that be trained? I'd highly doubt that. So, you know, we have to look at these cross-references. And I just want to mention one thing that Dr. Preston said to me the other night after the presentation at the Catherine Hennessy Lecture Series. We have the Institute of Climate Change and Adaptation. And as, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Preston, but you did say that this is an important component uh for medicine going forward because we forward because we all have to use that lens of reducing our carbon footprint, and this institute will be very integral part of the UPEI Medical School. Am I right in saying that?
You're certainly right in saying that. And without being unduly political, there's lots of physicians in this country that think the biggest threat to human health is climate change. And so the Medical Council of Canada has introduced a series of questions in the final exam that doctors have to do to finish medical school about planetary health, climate change, and the impact on human health. And so this past year, the Memorial, current Memorial students received that educational material and a couple of lectures from faculty at UPEI. And so, yeah, no, it's already happening. It's already happened, and yeah.
Yeah.
You're absolutely right.
And just one more reference when I was finishing up my four years at UPEI, '80, '81, I was Student Union President, and that was the year that Dr. Reg Thompson was forging ahead with the AVC. And I know his opponents from Nova Scotia were saying that we didn't have enough pigs, roosters, and chickens. Well, I think we've proven them wrong because AVC, as Dr. Keith knows, is probably one of the best veterinarian schools in the northeastern seaboard. So credit to Dr. Keith and all the other great doctors that have worked at that AVC. And I know, I know a former CEO says you can't compare animal signs with human signs. Well, we have organs, we have blood, we have skin, and maybe the animals have bigger brains, but it's all the same.
If you'd permit, you allude to one of the things that I think is really critical is that when you're training medical students, family medicine residents, and especially the first year or two of general specialties like psychiatry or general internal medicine, all of the clinical problems that they must learn on, all the clinical objectives, as we call them, that they must meet are here on PEI. We're not talking about the complications of heart surgery being taught in our programs. That's all fine and good for Toronto, Montreal, and Halifax, but what needs to be taught to junior learners is all right here in our clinics, in our communities, in our hospitals every day.
Good. Dr. Herb Dickerson, I also echo Council Twill's thank you to you for starting this off back in 2019. After graduation, my son, my daughter was graduating, and I think your son was graduating. We ended up back here, so thank you very much. And now, Myrtle, do you want to end up?
I just wanted to thank you, your worship and council here, because the boost of support that your council gave to this project really created the momentum to get things going. So I want to thank all of you very much.
Thank you.
So in close, thank you very much for giving us the opportunity again to share some highlights of the new med school. We'll leave you with a few treats. There's a nice shirt for everyone, a little brochure, and a lucky proposal.
Thank you very much, Myrtle. We'll pass them around. Thank you very much, Dr. Keith, Dr. Smith, Mr. Young, Dr. Murnahan, Heather, Dr. Dickerson, and Myrtle. Thank you very much. Thank you. Could you? Thanks, Myrtle. Did you want to introduce the next item? Do you want to introduce the next item?
What's that?
Transit Strategic Plan. Do you want to start it off, or do you want to just let them go right to it?
No, sure, if you want.
So the next item is Presentation Transit Strategic Plan by Left Turn/Right Turn Consultants. Council Bernard.
Yep. Thank you, your worship. We have Anna Keenan here, your worship, which is our Sustainable Transportation Officer. And we have the consultants. Given that they're going to give you an update tonight, your worship, on the report that they've been doing on some recommendations for the future of the transit system in Charlottetown for the next 10 years and beyond. So, yeah, they want to take over?
Take it away, Anna.
And I will add, this is just for information right now, so everybody's up to speed on the report. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, councillors and Mayor Brown. So I was delighted to find, when I started on as city staff in January, that we were already halfway through the development of a new 10-year strategic plan. Last August, I believe it was, you all decided very wisely to award the contract for development of this plan to Left Turn/Right Turn. Evan is here from Left Turn/Right Turn, and I think we also have Matt Latavo dialing in from Ontario. And they've been really fantastic consultants to work with. They're specialists in transit and accessibility, and they do a lot of consulting with municipalities all around Canada to develop these sorts of plans, long-term visions for, yeah, where we want to go with transit and how it can better serve the community. So one of the other things about Evan is also that he is a resident, or has been a lifelong resident, of Charlottetown. So not only do we have the expertise, we also have that deep local knowledge. I believe that Evan and Matt presented back in the fall to you all on the process that they were going to follow in terms of community consultation. They've done two rounds of consultation, very in-depth surveys, as well as multiple open house presentations to the community, and gathered all of that together. So Evan's going to present on the sort of functional recommendations for where we want the transit system to be in 10 years' time across the whole capital area. Of course, this is a partnership with Cornwall and Stratford. And then for the last five minutes, I'll take on some of the recommendations for implementation, the implications for operational and capital budgets, and so on. So, yeah, we are presenting just for information tonight. Tomorrow, we'll be presenting to Stratford Council, and next week to Cornwall Council. And then it is a very large report. You would have been linked to it in your meeting package today, 170 pages plus. So there's time to absorb it all, and it's going to go through Environment Sustainability Committee, where there's going to be a deeper opportunity to ask questions and a recommendation can come forward, should you also decide to endorse and adopt the recommendations of the plan. So with that, I'll pass over to Evan.
Thanks for that, Anna. As Anna mentioned, my name is Evan Brown. I'm a transit consultant with Left Turn/Right Turn and the project manager on this public transit plan. So just before getting into the specifics of the recommended transit network, I'm just going to take a second to talk about population growth and ridership demand in the capital area now and into the next 10 years. So on the left of your screen, the purple bar chart represents T3's historic ridership from 2016 to 2022. And as you can see, from year to year, ridership generally increases, with the exception of the years of the pandemic. In 2022, we had ridership exceed pre-pandemic levels, which was actually atypical for Canadian transit agencies of this size at that time. In 2023, while it's not shown on the bar chart, ridership numbers have increased by more than 30% from 2022 numbers. On the right side of your screen, these are projections for the next 10 years. The first table comes from Stantec's Housing and Growth Study. The numbers in this table are from their medium scenario and generally shows a very strong population growth from now until 2033, and this correlates to new and potential riders. The second table on this page is from the public transit plan and deals with transit ridership projections in our medium scenario that we developed. And what's important about this projection is that across the capital area over the next 10 years, we are projecting that ridership is going to increase by as much as 175%. This last point? Yeah, so using the medium scenario, we're projecting that transit ridership in the capital area is going to raise as much as 175%. And that is assuming that the recommendations in the plan are actioned. So on your screen is the 2023 network. It's composed of 11 routes, eight of which are serving the Charlottetown area. And through this public transit plan, as Anna alluded to, we conducted a significant amount of public engagement and stakeholder consultation to really delve into the gaps and challenges that residents are experiencing with the current system to inform how we would remedy those moving forward. And so some of the highlights from that engagement are listed on the screen and include that 81% of non-transit riders today that we heard from would actually consider moving to transit as their primary mode if it was improved. And the improvements that they specified and barriers for current riders that we heard from were, the top three were frequency, hours of operation, and service coverage. Moreover, only 23% of folks that we heard from reported that the current transit service in the 2023 Transit Network worked good or better for them. So we really wanted to incorporate all of this feedback in the development of the 2034 network, and this is what was developed and is recommended in the public transit plan. So key changes to this network that I'll highlight are listed on the screen. The first being a streamlining of the routes. We have reduced the overlap of some of the routes in order for the ease of accessibility and understanding of the network, as well as to increase service coverage while more efficiently using current resources. There is increased connectivity to the QEH Hospital, both to the uptown area and downtown area. There is more direct service to the airport. The East Royalty route, which currently only goes into Sherwood, is now extended all the way downtown and uses St. Peter's Road as kind of a transit spine. There is the addition of a transit hub at the Sherwood Centre, and this is to facilitate connectivity in the eastern part of Charlottetown, noting that there is already an uptown terminal and a downtown terminal. And then there is the introduction of a new service model, which is on-demand transit, which is meant to be demand-responsive in areas that have burgeoning ridership or maybe are a little bit more rural. And those areas are denoted on the map in yellow and include North Charlottetown, Eastern Stratford, and Cornwall. So moving forward, just to talk about the service details in 2023, I'll highlight where those barriers of frequency and hours of operation are evident. So in the table, rows one, two, and three, so roads one through down to 11, those are the Charlottetown routes. And as you can see, Route One, it has low frequency in the peak times, low frequency in the off-peak times, and low frequency on both Saturday and Sunday. What's more is that Route One is the only route in the 2023 network that has Sunday service and the only route to operate until 10:30 PM. The latest any other route operates currently is to 6:45 PM. And so these barriers to frequency and hours of operation, they're really more focused on the other routes. So with the other routes, peak service is as high as 60 minutes, and off-peak service is as high as two and a half hours. Saturday service is currently limited, and Sunday service, again, is relegated only to Route One. And so what that means is that there is no option for transit service on the weekends to areas of East Royalty, Windslow, or the airport. And so moving into 2034, over the next 10 years, this is what the frequency and hours of operation would build out to. And so the highlights here are that peak service is now 30 minutes or better, which is down from 60 minutes. Off-peak service is now 60 minutes or better, which is down from two or two and a half hours. And all routes, except for Route 15, which is the community bus, will have Saturday and Sunday service at 60-minute frequencies or better. And the higher ridership routes in this network will have expanded hours of operation, moving to an hour earlier and an hour later in the 2034 service plan. And then the service will, of course, be again supported by the on-demand transit that is implemented across the region. And now I'll hand it back to Anna to talk a little bit more about the considerations moving forward.
Thank you very much, Evan. So while this is a 10-year plan, I will say that the process of reflecting on the state of public transit in the capital area and doing that community consultation, it has already identified some quick wins that we're able to get on the board as early as this summer. So I'll mention two of them. First of all is improvements to the downtown terminal. So this is where the buses pull up right in front of the Confederation Centre. The image on this slide shows the end goal at the end of the 10-year strategy, but already this summer, we'll be able to take some steps towards that, which will dramatically improve safety for pedestrians and riders and efficiency of boarding at that stop. And it'll also make the stop better for drivers because buses will be able to pull out of the car lane and into a dedicated bus zone. We're consulting with Public Works Department on this and also Downtown Businesses. The Confederation Centre is very supportive of this change. And I will note that Monday to Friday before 9:00 AM every day, 26 buses come into and out of this stop, and a conservative estimate of the number of people getting on and getting off there would be 1,000 people before 9:00 AM. And so that's just a demonstration of the intensity of use that we're seeing, particularly on the high-frequency, high-demand, high-ridership route of Route One. The second stop, the second project that's a quick win that we're aiming to start off this summer is improving the bus stop inventory. So across the capital region, we have more than 400 stops, about 50 of which have shelters. And we need to assess their locations. Are the locations appropriate? And assess the facilities that are provided at each one. So the strategic plan recommends establishing really clear design standards for each bus stop so that we can have a standard for safety, accessibility, signage, ease of navigation, so that you can find a schedule and know where the bus is going at each stop, and also that they're appropriately spaced. Some of our stops are far too far apart, and there are many places where there's a stop on every block, which really slows down the speed and efficiency of the overall network. So we're going to start to do that assessment and work with the other municipalities and the province to try to identify a common bus stop design that could become a standard for not only our urban system but also the whole island, and we can find that common experience for a transit rider anywhere on the island. There's also already been some quick wins resulting from this strategy. There are many recommendations for technological upgrades that are yet to come, but one that has already been implemented. If any of you want to pull out your smartphone or pull up Google Maps now, you'll be able to, you know, say, "I want to get home from City Hall tonight," and you'll be able to find live directions on there, as you would sort of expect in any other major city. That was only recently updated, and we also have live bus tracking that's much more accurate now than it was even two months ago. And I think it's part of the process of having done this strategic plan that really gave the impetus to our operator to get that happening for us here in Charlottetown. Another major part of the strategic plan is addressing governance and administration. So we see that the strategic plan is recommending significant growth, and it will really take our transit system to the next phase of its maturity. And to do that, we're going to need to modernize the governance and oversight of the system as well. So the relationship between the three municipalities, or the CATCC is the representative body, Capital Area Transit Coordinating Committee. The relationship between the CATCC and TRIAS is governed by a contract, and our consultants have reviewed that contract. And our consultants have reviewed that contract and made a few key recommendations for what that could look like were that contract to be renegotiated and modernized in the future. So the four key recommendations for governance, and there are more in the report, but ones that I'll highlight here include working with Trius to explore moving towards an operations and maintenance-only contract versus the way it's currently defined, which is really a turnkey service in which they deliver an entire service, rather than having a more focused role, which is operating the service and maintaining the buses and facilities that we own. Second is transitioning to a fee-for-service-delivered model with municipalities retaining the fare revenue. So you probably know through the municipal budgets that all of the passenger fare revenue is currently held by Trius as part of their overall compensation. And the proposal, which is explained in full rationale in the strategic plan, is that the municipalities would retain that fare revenue as part of total revenue for the municipality, and then we would pay a flat rate for the operation of each service hour across the system. Third, there's a recommendation to develop standardized performance reports and establish an audit process, basically so that we can have the information that we need to make annual decisions on operational and capital budgets. And Left Turn, Right Turn have proposed a number of really useful standard metrics that are used in comparable municipalities. And fourth, related to the renegotiation of the contract, is that CATCC retain all responsibility for service planning, management, and communication. The table on the right here shows the cost-sharing model. So when the contract was initiated with the three municipalities back in 2012, it was envisioned that Charlottetown would have 75% of the service and the cost, Stratford 15 and Cornwall 10. But over the last 10 years, Charlottetown has tended to invest more each year, and that's grown the proportion of the service that is here in Charlottetown. And over the next 10 years, should we follow this plan, Stratford and Cornwall's, I think all three municipalities will grow, but Stratford and Cornwall at a faster rate. And so that should have an impact on the amount of traffic, car traffic that is coming in across the bridge and across the causeway into this city. In terms of investment and funding, there's obviously very important financial implications for all of this benefits and expansion of service. On the left is operational, on the right is capital. The total service hours, we're proposing to increase from the current amount, which is about 34,000 service hours per year, to 89,000 service hours per year. And that would allow us to basically meet the Canadian standard per capita for a municipality of this size and to account for population growth, as Evan was talking about earlier. The next three lines of the table need to be taken collectively. It can seem quite alarming to see operating expenses multiplying by four, from 2.6 to 10.2. But the next line explains that if we do make the change that's recommended to bring the fare revenue in-house, that will offset the growth in out-of-pocket costs to the municipality because we're taking in that fare revenue instead of Trius retaining it as part of their compensation. And so the net impact on the budget, if it is currently 2.6 million across the three municipalities, it's proposed to increase to 6.2 million, with the net operating cost per service hour decreasing moderately over the next 10 years as economies of scale develop. On the capital cost side, in the report is quite a lot of detail on the expenses for improving bus stops, the two terminals, introducing on-demand transit. You're all familiar with the project to upgrade the depot on Mount Edward Road, the garage, upgrading technology and buying more buses as our current buses age out and as we transition to fleet electrification. So the average capital cost for this is approximately $6 million. But there'll be high variability each year. And of course, funding opportunities are significant for capital expenses with both provincial and federal funds. So for this year of about $7 million in cost that's being invested, 6.88 million is funded. And of course, all of this investment is made because there are very substantial benefits to public transit, reducing car congestion and the pressure for parking, especially as population grows, taking action on environment and climate change. And for access and equity reasons, for people who don't have a license or who don't have a car, for whatever reason, transit enables them to participate in the economy and in the community. And if you go out, like I've done for a couple of days per month, and I've just ridden the transit system all day to meet the riders and to see how it functions, you will see that the primary users of the system are young people, elders, people with disabilities, newcomers, low-income people, and students. And I would call them the core demographic for any transit system. But then there are also people who are riding it because it's convenient for them. And as we increase frequency and make improvements to the route network, we will have more and more of those convenience users who are choosing to use it, not because they have to, but because they want to, because it's an improvement to their life, saves them money, time, effort, and saves space. So the next steps is council and all three councils to endorse the plan in principle after consideration through committees, to make a request to staff that we deliver you annual progress reports and budget forecasts during each budget season, and to review and update the transit plan every five years, should you accept its current form. So I think we'll wrap it up there and then happy to take questions.
Thank you very much, Anna. Counselor Beck.
Thank you for that, Anna. And Evan, sorry. Just a, I find it interesting when I go by transit stops. When you're, this is really just a comment. When I look at the, you were talking about young people and students and that sort of thing. When I go by transit stops, I often see a congregation of younger people and students there. So I think that, like, people in this room, we didn't grow up with the bus system in Charlottetown. We don't know what it's like. I'll be honest with you, I've never been on a bus in Charlottetown. But I think the fact that we're getting younger people into it at an earlier age and having them kind of become familiar with, it becomes part of their lifestyle, it changes the daily habits, I think that's going to bode well for... Like, when you're making your predictions, Evan, on median projections and, you know, very easily that could slide up above median projections. If we continue on with that ingrained habit of people using the bus, especially if the frequency is improved and the routes are improved and there's stability and all that sort of stuff. So I think it's exciting myself. You know, when you look at the numbers of where the bus, when you look back, take it back even further from where Mike first started. I mean, I've had conversations with him before, and it's pretty impressive in terms of where it's been. And of course, Councilor Ramsey, having been a bus driver for a few years, could speak to that as well, too. So anyway, I applaud your effort and keep up the good work. Thanks.
Counselor Twill.
Thank you for your presentation. Just four of my own pillars that I've been advocating and promoting in recent years. Want to begin with the main entrances. Back when I was involved with the committee, we made a substantial change on University Avenue. That was the spine where the bus would stop at every interval, every 15 minutes. That was huge in terms of increasing the ridership. That was, as they say, a game changer. But when I think of the main entrances, for example, North River Road, the Queen Streets, of course, University Avenue, Mount Edward Road, Kensington Road. Are we going to have consistencies in all of those routes so that people will be able to navigate to those main routes into the city and use them as a spine, like what we did with University Avenue? That's the first question.
Yeah, and I think the 2034 network is really designed to be cognizant of those spines. So Kensington Road, for example, we have distributed transit routes through St. Peters Road and Kensington to ensure that there is not too much transit congestion on any one route, but also providing that expanded service coverage, but also getting people more where they want to go and predicting those kind of travel behavior patterns. So in terms of meeting that kind of connectivity and ensuring that those spines are serviced with transit as a viable option to the vehicle, I think the 2034 network does that well.
Let me talk to you about east-west routes, like Belvidere Avenue, Allen Street. What are we doing to enhance and improve the availability of the transit? For example, when I think of Allen Street, you know, the transit, traveling from the old part of the city through Parkdale to the Queen Elizabeth Hospital, Charlottetown Civic Center, the Driving Park, and all those other amenities out in that part of the city, and of course, Belvidere Avenue. What are we doing to enhance and improve the service delivery in that regard?
I might just ask Tracy if it's possible to bring up the slide deck again, and we can just have a glance at the 2034 map. It was one of the points that was raised during the second round of public consultations. So after the first round of consultation, Left Turn, Right Turn made an initial draft map of the routes, and then they went out to a second consultation and gathered 400 responses on a survey that then allowed them to tweak those suggested routes and come up with the final proposal for the map. And one of those proposals was the addition of this crosstown route here, the orange route. And largely, we have to remember that we need to be designing bus routes that are based on population density and demand-based sort of destinations. And because of the really significant green space in the middle of town, there is not a lot of destinations that are sort of on that route. And so I suppose the main population densities are really along this vertical spine here and then this spine heading out to the east. And so that's where the main linear routes have been established. And if you really take the time and look at the maps, you'll see that the big difference between the roots, the new routes and the old routes, is the linearity of them. They're a lot less windy, turning fewer corners. And it's really that, based on the success of that Route 1, University Avenue model we have now that just goes up and down in a straight line every 15 minutes, more of that sort of service is what we'll be moving towards on the other routes on that regular schedule that's so frequent that people don't need to be checking the schedule or they just know, you know, "Bus 2 goes by my house on the hour and on the half hour every hour, you know, from the morning until the evening." And it's that convenience and that sort of intuitive awareness of the transit system that really increases ridership. So I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
My third point I'd like to bring up is the daily service that's being provided for the transit users. And of course, one of the, not a criticism, but one of the recommendations I've been hearing from residents is the hours of service. And I know you alluded to that, but, you know, a lot of them feel that because the service cuts off at a certain time, they're unable to use the service. And I know in your 10-year plan here, what is the expectation that the users can say, you know, "Finally, you know, the hours of service suits my schedule, so I'm able to take advantage of that, especially if I work shift work or, you know, I'm going to the hospital." Or, again, I reference the Charlottetown Driving Park or Civic Center or any one of those amenities, which is very important to the functionality of this city.
Yeah. So hours of operation, to your point, was the second most heard-about-desired improvement, the barrier that people are currently facing. I think it was 58% of respondents cited hours of operation being their primary concern or their secondary concern. And so to your point, it is Route 1 that goes till 10:30 p.m. and the other routes currently only operate as late as 6:45 p.m. And so the service hours that are allocated to the 2034 network, that 89,000 service hours, that represents a bucket for service enhancements. And those service enhancements are meant to bring the frequencies lower and expand the hours of operation. And that is where this plan has a little bit of flexibility, is when to prioritize lowering frequencies or increasing those hours of operation. So if the council of Charlottetown, Stratford, Cornwall, if they feel that hours of operation should be prioritized, some of those service hours can be allocated to hours of operation earlier than the plan suggests. Currently, the structure of the plan has the routes being realigned in the near term, so over the next couple of years. And then there is that more of a focus of enhancing the frequencies and hours of operation after we are able to realign those routes, just so people get used to the service that's available and then that service improves. But again, there is some leeway there based on resident priorities.
Thank you.
Just, I know some councillors are rolling their eyes. No, I know, just let me finish, let me finish. But when you look at an issue like this, we're in a special meeting, all the information or questions being get answered, I appreciate it. So we have to allow a little leeway. If you have questions, this is the opportunity. I know Counselor Twill has been around this block right since the beginning of this transit system. He was on council when Mike Castiel initiated the system. So, and he has, you know, he has some good questions. So again, please get your questions out now. Anna doesn't want to find out later. Well, why didn't you ask it when we met on this evening, Monday evening? So, or Tuesday evening. Go ahead, Counselor Twill.
Not much reference was made in your presentation to the contractor, Trius. And I'm interested in terms of your dialogue and discussions with the contractor, where there's uniformity and where there's a difference, like where's the gaps and where is, there's cohesion. Maybe you can help give me an insight into that part of the equation.
So I do appreciate the time. I'll get to this question, but I understand that there's a lot of other things on your agenda, and this will go through committee as well. So we will have an opportunity to go even more in-depth in committee. Trius is a fantastic partner in delivering the transit system. They've been part of the system since the beginning, and it really is a partnership and a collaboration. They're as passionate about delivering great transit in Charlottetown as we are. We have to recognize that the incentives are different for a public body versus a private company. But it is, so that, yeah, there are just different incentives in that conversation. But they have been very strongly engaged in the development of this plan, have had multiple opportunities, in addition to the public commentary, to review the routes, to review the drafts, to offer their feedback. They've had one-on-one meetings, and we've come to, I think, what we're finally putting forward here is something that they're on board with as well. I think the recommendations in the governance section speak to the need to mature- to, um, mature the relationship, um, between the municipalities and Trius, and have just that little bit more oversight, um, because we've sort of, it's been a, a small-town, uh, system delivered on a very personal basis until now, um, but what we're proposing is really something, um, that is going to expand it and make it a much more significant, um, public service that needs a really appropriate level of oversight for that, and we, we want to see it operating in, in the same sort of way and with the same sort of level of rigor that we would expect in, in any other municipality. And so that will result in some changes in that relationship. Um, you know, we are paying for a service, and we should get to define what that service looks like, and, uh, and Trius will always be a really important, um, you know, player to consult with in the delivery of that service.
And councillor Twill, this doesn't preclude or prevent you from going to the committee when it is presented at the standing committee? Correct there councillor Bernard? It's open. So I, I appreciate your questions because they are, they are good questions. I just wanted to just ask one of my own, one of my own questions. If you go to the, uh, 2023 network slide, the survey, what, what was the sample? Hundred, two hundred, thousand?
Four hundred in each of the two surveys.
Four hundred in each of the two? Okay. And on the quick, quick wins slide, quick wins? Um, yeah, so that proposed configuration, does that mean that the parking that is on the south side of Grafton Street between Queen and Great George Street will be eliminated? Or displaced?
In the long-
The red?
Yes. So there's currently 20 parking spots there, and, uh, in the short term, we, we have to confirm the numbers with Riley. It won't be all 20 parking spots this summer. That might be in the 10-year plan, um, but you will hear about it before that change is, is, like, we have to first draft the plan, and then we'll report to council on, on what the plan is for this summer before it's implemented. Um, but I'm sure that you can agree that with the number of people who are using that stop every day, that, um, to-
I've been there.
Yeah, 14, 14 parking spots for a few thousand people every day is worthwhile.
Yeah, five o'clock is not a good time to be down there. So under the investment and funding slide, I'm just looking again there, um, so it says operating expenses 2023, 20, 2034, 10.2 million. Um, that means the share from the other capital regional partners will be increasing, of course, correct? Stratford and Cornwall?
Yes. So of the 2.6 million, and that's, that's not the total operating expenses-
No.
-paid by Trius, that is the amount of expenditure from the municipal budgets. Um, probably 2 million of that is Charlestown right now, um, but in the cost of service in 2034, um, it would be closer to, Charlestown's share would be closer to 75% of that 10.2 million.
And Anna, CNIB, they have been, uh, speaking to the city of Charlestown about some of the issues for persons with dis, with vision issues or vision, uh, inability to see, um, they have to be addressed, and I know councillor Twill has brought this up before, also the accessibility. Uh, persons in wheelchairs sometimes cannot use the transit system, uh, because of, they can't lock down the, lock down the, uh, their, 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 their wheelchairs. So these are big issues that we have to take care of. And, um, you know, Trius has been rate, has been with us right from the start. It's a triple P. As we all know, sitting here during the COVID-19, uh, two-year lockdown, getting back into, into the community, Trius kept running their bus line, their transit system, whereas Nova, in, in Halifax, Moncton, they were shutting down because of, they just couldn't get the, 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 the operators and so forth, so we've had a really good relationship. So what's Trius' reaction to some of your recommendations, or have you, I'm sure you have spoken to them about these changes in what we want to do?
Yeah, they, they have been involved, uh, throughout. They've given feedback on some of the earlier drafts, and, you know, they're receptive to, to what's in there, and very much open to the conversations about, um, changes to the contract, so that's been very positive.
Councillor Bernard?
Thank you. Um, and I'm just wondering, and I know, uh, we all know that the transit, the ridership has gone through the roof, it's been really growing. Um, I'm just wondering, and some of the recommendations that we're looking to ask council to support, one of them was, um, I'm wondering, with TC Transit went through this, I assume, or, I'm sorry, when, when we went through this, um, report, um, I'm assuming TC Transit was consulted all along the way. So I guess, I guess what I'm wondering is, is some of the recommendations that we're making, how does Transit Three feel about it? Have they, have you guys been consulting them on some of the recommendations you've been making to council?
So I think, yeah, Trius Transit is the operator of T3 Transit is, um, yeah, the three municipalities, and, yeah, the three municipalities have been part of this process the whole way as well, and have, we've, you know, not only circulated drafts or the, the feedback to the public, but there were internal drafts that were reviewed by staff of all three municipalities.
So, but I'm talking about the provider. I'm talking-
Yeah, so that's Trius, or Trius, Trius, Trius. Trius Transit is our, um, our operator, and in fact, one of the sections, um, talks about brand confusion between T3 Transit and Trius Transit. Often, there has been a, an mistaken public, public perception that transit in this province is operated by a private company, or is, is delivered entirely by a private company, which is not the case. It is a public service. Um, there are many municipalities who, like us, own the buses and own the transit facilities, and then contract that out to an operator. There are some aspects of our contractual relationship that are, you know, you could say, unique in Canada, um, but, yeah, Trius has been involved, um, throughout that whole, that whole process.
Yeah, so, yeah, so what I'm wondering is, is there any concerns from the operator on some of the changes we're proposing? Some of the new recommendations we're looking to, to approve?
I think if there were any significant aspects of pushback, then they've been addressed through the sort of first drafting and second drafting process. Of course, it is-
So they've been involved all along, that's, they know, okay.
Yeah. And, yeah, it is going to be, um, an adjustment, and there will be difficult conversations, I'm sure, um, through the process of implementation.
Well, I guess, I guess that's what I'm getting, getting to.
Yeah.
So, um, so if you're fairly sure there's going to be some difficult discussions, they haven't started yet?
There's conversations about the, uh, the bus depot, there's conversations about fleet electrification. These are more challenges to be worked through, and to be worked through together in partnership between the municipalities and the provider.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm really talking about what was in the report here, and, and the new routes, and the, and the, the fee schedule, and stuff like that, and, and, uh, the recommendation about what you said about the flat rate, and the city keeps revenue.
Yeah.
That's all been discussed with them, and there's no concerns?
Yes. So they, they already have a, um, a fee-for-service contract with the province, where the province retains fair revenue, and that would be typical of, um, most transit contracts across the rest of the country as well.
Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you.
So could I just ask before we, that's it councillor Bernard, any other questions? Um, could we get a, a list of just those operators in the Atlantic Province where the municipality owns the buses, owns the shelters, similar to what we have at T3, the contractor? I don't think Moncton, Moncton has its own transit system. Halifax has its own transit system. St. John's has their own transit system. St. John's, I don't know, but could, I don't know, do they own it? Well, we'll find out.
Yeah, we can certainly provide a, a list, um, in Atlantic Canada of the, the agencies that contract out. Um, the, the public transit plan draft does have a peer benchmarking section where it does, um, compare the capital area transit to, to peer agencies, and that specifies as whether they are a municipal department or a contracted operation.
Okay. Councillor Brown, I can't see you. Do you want to have any questions?
No, I have no questions. Uh, I'll wait till they come back to the committee as well. That's, that's great, thank you.
Thank you. So Anna, Evan, and Matt, I can't see Matt, but Matt, is it Lada, Latovo? Uh, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Councillor Twill? Did you, want to say goodbye to them?
Pardon me?
Want to say goodbye to them?
Yeah, just before we say goodbye, till we meet again, General MacArthur would say, "We shall return." Um, when will there be, uh, another open house with, with your, uh, latest findings to present to the public?
So I think we have concluded the, the public consultation process. This is now the sort of final presentation. This is a, a publicly available meeting, so, um, you know, yeah, we don't have a, a public presentation planned as an open house. Yep.
Yeah. But the meeting for the Standing Committee on Environment Sustainability, when they speak to that committee, that is an open, transparent, fully accountable? Yeah, okay, thank you, thank you.
With the, uh, the library, I, I thought those, those, uh, those open forms and the presentation, and the personalization of that presentation went over very well, and I just thought, you know, if you were going to emulate that.
Yeah. There was, at the second round, when we did the second survey, there was also an online session that was attended by, um, probably a few dozen members of the public as well, the, the key stakeholders.
Councillor Bernard?
I think councillor, it, those meetings were to collect a lot of information from the public, and that's what they did, and they're coming back to us now with the results.
Okay. Final word, okay, thank you. General who? Thank you very much. Okay. Two finance resolutions, and one bylaw reading.
We are doing the approval of the community grants, and I just want to recognize that councillor Beck is removing, councillor, councillor Beck has left the room. Tracy? Councillor Beck has left the room. Could you read it, please? Uh, just one sec.
Ready?
We're just going to read. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. Moved by councillor McCabe, uh, seconded by, uh, Deputy Mary Ancoff. Be it resolved that the city of Charlestown approve the recommended community grants as outlined in the attached report to finance, report number, uh, F I N dash 11 dash 2024, for the fiscal period of 2024, 2025.
Councillor Twill?
Uh, thank you. Um, a couple of questions. I guess the first question would be concerning, I think, is seniors active for a living? $15,000. We already approved the operational budget for CARRY, did we not? When, when, uh, when the budget was brought down at the end of March? So now, I see here another $15,000. Here's the concern. We seem to have two seniors organizations in this city. We have one that, that meets here, uh, on a monthly basis, and we have another seniors organization out at the, uh, at the CARRY facility. Um, my question is, why do we have two? And why, why is it not under, under one umbrella, so that the seniors could be collaborating as one unit for that particular demographic throughout the city of Charlestown? And why is there another additional ask of $15,000, when we already approved the budget for CARRY, which was substantial?
Councillor Twill, if you notice, CARRY, S A L C Rent, it's been deferred. Yeah, but it's deferred. It's not going ahead. It's deferred.
There, sir, $15,000.
Right, but if it says committee recommendation, committee, committee, committee recommendation, defer.
So that $15,000 that's there, below the defer, is, is not included?
That's right. It's, it, it is there, that's going to the Seniors Active Living Centre that's at UPEI.
Right.
The other, for the rent, that has been deferred. That's not being, that's not part of this budget.
Then why doesn't that say defer?
Which one? The Seniors Active Living Centre?
Center, $15,000. Request was 20.
Yeah.
Staff recommendation 15.
Right.
Committee recommendation $15,000.
Yeah, we, we, we've always given that $15,000. Remember, remember the new agreement, because the independence of the board, the CARRY board, they wanted the rent, so, so we've included that rent in the CARRY, um, CARRY budget that we give them each year, that rent. This is going to the club, the Seniors Active Living Center-
Okay.
-to help their, and you, you've always supported it. I, I, I know, and it's confusing, I know that.
No, 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 no.
I agree with you.
So, so, okay, so $15,000, now, we have two senior organizations in this city.
And we get the seniors active-
I understand that, Mr. Mayor.
The seniors engagement.
Sir, I understand that.
Yeah.
My question is, why do we have two? Why don't we have one that is representative of all, all the seniors in, 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 throughout the city of Charlestown? Why is there two? I, 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 I don't understand. I tried to ask questions about this a few months ago, and I really didn't get a, an effective, uh, response, but, but anyway, I'm, I'm just wondering why we have two senior organizations, uh, one for CARRY and one for the rest of the city?
No, no, the one that, it's the Seniors Active Living Centre, out at UPEI, was per up the build in 2004 when we opened it, remember that?
Oh, I sure do.
And we committed $600,000 to build the facility as part of the CARRY plan.
Yeah.
This is only supporting something we've supported for the last 20 years. It's just the rent is going to be, is already incorporated in the CARRY budget that was passed, in the budget.
Just take that under advisement.
Yeah.
My second question is, uh, the Y skateboarding-
Yes.
Made a request for $5,000. Uh, why wasn't that request fulfilled?
Debbie, did you want to comment?
Thank you, your worship. We prioritize grants to not-for-profits. Um, it is not an intention of these grants to be, um, adding to a profit-making organization, and we just don't know about Y skateboarding. We have reached out to them both by telephone and by email, um, two, three, or more weeks ago, seeking further clarification on what their status is, and we have not heard back. So we have not recommended moving forward with that one at this time.
Okay.
And if we, if we do get a hold of them, and we find out it's not-for-profit-
Yeah.
-it'll be coming back to this council to approve?
I like to help the skateboarders.
Yes, I know you do.
Uh, the last question, Blooming House. Back in '22, I think it was $25,000, then last year we put it up to 50, $50,000, and this year, now it's $75,000. Why such a dramatic increase?
Councillor Twill, you want my opinion?
Yeah.
The need is that great. They're full every night. They're turning people away.
No, no, that's fine.
The reports are all in there.
No, no, that's fine. But, okay, if that's the case, then what are we doing for, uh, for the needs, for, for men? Are we, are we giving $75,000 to men's shelters? I mean-
There was no ask.
No, 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 but still, the, the need is there. For example, um, if you look at down in Wayman Street, that is run by the-
Bedford McDonald House.
Bedford McDonald House. I mean, they're out there in the middle of, middle of the winter, eight o'clock at night, and they still can't get in.
Yeah.
What, what are we doing to help assist, uh, the men's shelter? I mean, again, you know, I'm, I'm thinking of an equal-level playing field, $75,000. I'm not questioning the need, I just wanted to know why the dramatic increase, and are we, do we have an equal-level playing field for the men's shelters?
Councillor McCabe, and then Debbie, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm just going to speak from the perspective of being on the committee and being part of the discussions, is part of our grants policy and stuff that we've already approved, it was that these grants are applied for in November, and then we look at them, and we approve money based on what we've approved in that budget. If you don't ask for money, we're not going to go look for opportunity to give money at that point. So in this case, they did not ask, and Betty, you can clarify for me, but I don't think there was a request that came in from the Salvation Army on behalf of the Bedford McDonald House for a grant, so that's why they don't have any money.
Betty, I think that, can you just respond to councillor McCabe's question? And that is, did they make a request?
Thank you, your worship. We did not receive a request from Bedford House either this year or last year, and just for clarification on Blooming House, last year, my understanding was it was a new ask, it was a new initiative, so there had not been an ask the year before. I don't know if there had been a request in previous years, but the immediately previous year, there was not. Last year, the request was for $75,000, and we approved 50. This year, the request was again, $75,000, and we're recommending the full $75,000 be approved.
Debbie?
Thank you, your worship. And just to build on that comment from, from Betty, and, um, so we've got three grants, boys- And just to build on that comment from Betty, and so we've got three grants, Boys and Girls Club, the Charlottetown Yacht Club, and the Confederation Race. Don't not. Yeah, so these three did not submit a request. So how come we're still giving them money?
They're perled up an ongoing agreement between the city and those events, but it falls under grants.
All three of them?
Yeah, the Charlottetown Yacht Club, Charlottetown Racing Series, and the Charlottetown Meals and Wheels, they have been.
No, not Meals and Wheels, Boys and Girls Club.
They've, every year, and also, we provide the building, we own the building.
So did, so can we, can I get that confirmed? Did Boys and Girl Club submit an application for money? Because it says here that they didn't.
Betty?
But we're going to give them money.
Thank you, Your Worship. We have more information now than we did when this report was prepared. The Boys and Girls Club, there is an agreement with them for $20,000 per year, and that agreement goes until 2032. The Charlottetown Yacht Club, there is a 10-year agreement, which 2024 will be the sixth year. And the Confederation Racing Series, they do submit an application every year, but it's, part of it goes through economic development, part through the mayor's office, and part through these grants. So the application actually was sitting with economic development, and we just got a copy of that today. But they submit every year.
Follow up?
Yep, thank you. So that just leads then to my next request. If we can get, for council's clarification, some sort of a spreadsheet, some sort of an information sheet, whatever that would look like, of all the grants? Because they seem to be, you know, some are in this department, and some are in finance, and some are over here. So it might be nice for us to know all of the grants that are going out, not just this small amount that comes through finance. Can I just put a request to whoever would be, I guess it doesn't have to come through finance, because some of them are through economic development? So who could do that for council?
Finance. Betty?
Thank you, Your Worship. We are just in the process of finalizing, compiling that list for the '23-'24 year, and it will get posted on the website. But I can bring that back to council as well. That can provide more detail. The, what we're putting on the website will just be the actual grant, but for council, I can provide the budget amount and who has agreements and that sort of thing, just a bit more information. So I can bring that to the next meeting.
Counsel Bernard?
Great, thank you, Your Worship. As I always say, if you wait long enough in the queue, your questions get answered. And that was my exact question, was the, getting some clarification on the three that were not requested. So thank you to Counselor Yankoff for bringing that forward. The other question that I'll have is, is this just a representation of the ones that were reviewed and approved versus was there other applicants that did not make the list? Because we are roughly about $17,000 still to the good here. So was there any, and I know the chair's not here, so I maybe defer the question to the manager?
Betty, could you speak to that?
Thank you, Your Worship. These are all the grants that were submitted under this community grant program.
Thank you.
Counsel Ramsey.
Thank you, Your Worship. Years ago, when we started this, when I was on finance, and if there was a certain group looking for money for grant, trying to, if they were turning a profit, that was always in all, correct? And I, like, I just want to clarify that.
Yeah, that's the issue with the Wise Skateboarders.
And that's why we sort of stepped away from the Spud Tournament through the years and all that stuff the last couple of years, because they were, they were turning a profit. So I just want to confirm that. Is that still happening?
That is.
Okay, thank you very much. I just wanted to straighten my head, thank you.
Counsel Bernard?
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm just wondering, so on all these, there's a report in the, a report in each one of these requests. And I'm just wondering, the seniors active living, and you have Cary, seniors active living rent, are they not the same thing?
They are, and remember, you recall last year, the Cary Board, an independent body, said that they can ask for rent. They were trying to get the rent, and we said, we'll put it through your budget, so it goes into the Cary budget. This S.
But.
Seniors Active Living Center, we've been giving that to the S A L C since it opened some 20 less years ago.
But that $15,000 we've been given was to go towards the rent?
It is. Now, because they were getting that in the past, and they were paying the rent, they've asked that we continue it to help support their operations.
Right, and that's why I'm asking. So it looks like here, like we're looking to give 15, and then a possible another 15.
Yeah.
Where the 15 used to go to pay the rent so they could have their space rent-free.
Common.
I think what the Cary Board was saying was, we want to up it to.
35?
To the going rate for rental space.
Yeah.
And we said no. But that was always my understanding, we were paying for their space.
Yeah.
So my understanding that we're paying for the space plus giving another 15?
No, the space is, has always been paid.
So how come there's not a report on both these then? There's only one.
Because we deferred it, and as I said, when I was at the Budget Committee or at the Finance and Administration Standing Committee, is that we give them a operating budget every year. This year's operating budget over last year is up by 25% for Cary. It's now 1.25 million.
Right.
So that 1, 2.5 million is incorporating that $15,000 rent. And as you know, you were on this council, $75,000 is coming from Bell Canada right into their budget. That agreement that.
How did that contract end it?
It did. New contract was negotiated by the Board.
And is it for the same amount?
$75,000 in cash per year over the next five years.
That's what it was before?
No, it was 70, city got 50, they got 20. Zero.
So then there's not a report on the deferral, why it was deferred then? It's just.
I thought we, I don't know where the deferral came from. I thought we discussed it, and it was done.
I think C A O wants.
Thank you, Your Worship. Through to Counsel Bernard, I think we'd have to double-check this, but if I recall, from all that negotiation that had to do with the lease and everything else, that resolution that came forward, that's when council voted for this to support the $15,000 for. So that's already been done and dealt with.
Yeah.
So now seniors living is coming forward and asking for their regular $15,000. So we are paying for the rent, and now they're asking for this money for their operations.
But I guess my concern is, I always, I always was under the understanding that when we approved $15,000, that was for the rent. There was no other money. It was $15,000 a year we've been giving them, not 30. We've been giving them $15,000 over the last number of years.
That's right.
So I, this is a, we can bring back more information on this, but as far as I understood, the city was already subsidizing their rent?
Well, they wanted a 20-year deal.
Right.
Cary Board was not agreeing to them doing that, but we, as a council, overstepped it. So that was their 20, it was 20,000, what I understood.
On a 20,000. And we said, no, 15.
15 for the next.
Yeah.
Anyway, so that, to me, that was the grant we used to give them.
Yeah.
We pre-approved it early.
Yeah.
So I guess that's what I'm saying. Are we doing it, because I think we have it in there twice.
It is a separate ask, and I think that we have to support our seniors. Mr. Jenkins?
Thank you, Your Worship. Through Your Worship to Counsel Bernard, just a little clarification. I think the deferral resulted from our committee meeting in discussing this issue. I did clarify with Alan Wood, the manager, today. In effect, the $15,000 was paid, has been paid directly to the seniors active living center. They had remitted approximately half of it, or $7,500, to Cary for common area costs, which is part of the traditional lease that they had in place. That lease expired in December. But I think in working with Alan, we'll be able to remove the obligation for the city to pay the rent directly to Cary and just proceed on the basis that was recommended at committee, which is to pay the seniors active living center the same $15,000 that they got for the last year and the last many years. So.
No, just one sec.
And in effect, there really is no rent, because the city has undertaken to absorb or cover that cost. And even if there was a check to come from the city to Cary for rent, we would end up 87% beneficiaries of that because we subsidize 87% of the operating deficit. So if there was money from the city, we get 87% of it back in a reduction in our subsidy to the organization. I know it's confusing, but that's kind of where we are.
Yeah. So when we built the building, and the seniors active living space was made, there was rent to be paid. We said we recover the rent. The rent, that was what the $15,000 a year was for. And that was contract, we did that for, I don't know, five years, whatever, and the contract expired. So when we had our conversations here, to me, that was what that was about. So we gave it. So this is on top of what we gave, is the way I'm looking at it. So if we already approved it by council, then, and it's already been paid out, I assume?
No, it hasn't been paid out. So I think what we're looking to do, and we'll work this out with Cary Board, but I think we're going to undo the resolution of council to pay the money directly to Cary, that we would just send the funds directly to the seniors active living center. They will submit about half of that to the Cary Board for common area costs. And in effect, they'll end up retaining about half of that for their own general operating expenses. So it'll be, in effect, a grant to them to go above and beyond the rent.
So then, if we're going to dissolve the resolution?
Yeah.
And you say the check was already set out?
No, there has been.
Oh, there was no money.
Okay. Counsel Bernard, okay. Deputy? I. Go ahead there, Deputy, we've been waiting in the queue like.
Thank you. Just to circle back on these grants that are in all kinds of different areas, I assume they've all had to go through the grant policy that we approved last year. And those submissions had to begin in November, so the next round of grants will be next November. Just, I just want that clarified, because I know there's some talk of keeping extra money in there in case people apply throughout the year. But I was pretty sure that when we approved this grant policy, that was to streamline and the process so that November was when people submitted their applications for any grants. And that, and my second question is, when you say, Betty, that all the grants are going to be listed on the website, you mean more than just the finance grants? You mean the ones from all the other departments too, right?
Correct. Betty?
Thank you, Your Worship, and through to the deputy mayor. Yes, all the grants for the whole city, not just these grants, will be posted on the website and presented to council. And no, not all the grants are covered by the grant policy. They are all covered by the grant bylaw. And the grant bylaw lists out several different grant programs, of which these, which we're now calling community grants, are called community grants in the bylaw. There's also the micro grants through environment and sustainability, there's heritage grants, there are events and tourism grants. And each of the different grant programs have their own policy. So the community grant policy does have this November 30th deadline, but the others might not. It depends on what their policy is. So the intention of the bylaw was to be an umbrella, did I say that right? The intention of the bylaw is it's meant to be an umbrella for all grants, but then each different grant program will have their own policy with their own requirements and rules. So the November 30th deadline works for this program, but a different program may have different needs. Like I know the micro grants, their applications are out right now, or they may have recently closed, but it's in the process now. They don't wait until November, and I don't know about the different grant programs. I know about this one, I don't know the details of the others.
So if we look at the tax incentive program, that is a grant in itself, but that doesn't, is not governed by this. That's governed by whether it's an affordable housing project or it's an economic development project. You want to follow up there?
Yes. Then can I just put a request into the ether, I guess it would be to our C A O, that council is provided with something that outlines, I get the grant bylaw, so now there's a grant application process for, I think you listed four different possibilities that people can apply. I would love that clarified so that I know when other grants come in, which policy they fall under. So I don't know who can give us that, but I wouldn't mind having that at my fingertips going forward.
So in the budget from '23-'24, it had agreements. Airport authority, $295,000. Cary, property taxes, $135,000. Cary, operations, $985,000. Civic Center operations, $1 million. So I don't know if it's broken down this year in the new budget, but last year's grant, community grants amounted to $681,300, or $681,300. And this year, we're down to 387? So we've reduced the actual number of grants that we put out.
But grants are in.
There's grants, as she mentioned earlier.
My parents are racking a bunch of grants for.
Counsel Twill?
So we're going to give money to the seniors active for living for operation. We have another seniors committee here, you know, that was appointed by council. And we got two different organizations.
Doing two different things too, though, Betty.
Well, you know what, that, Julie, but that's.
No, no, just finish up what you're going to say.
That's what we need clarified.
Okay.
We got two different organizations. Do they both have access in terms of the facility, the governance model, all of those things? Like, do we need to, or are we giving the other seniors organization, the group that meets here once a month at City Hall, are we giving them an operational grant?
Counsel Twill, the Senior Engagement Advisory Committee, that's what we have here in the city, that's an advisory committee. Each of those members get a stipend every month. They advise us on how we conduct senior activities or how we incorporate seniors within the greater community. The seniors active living center is something that we created when we built the Cary facility and opened it in 2004. And to great fanfare, because it's a success, and it.
I didn't say it was.
No, I know that, I know you agree that it, but that's the difference. Okay, can we get a question on this? Questions called. Oh, Counsel Dron, you all right with it?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Questions called. Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Counsel Dron, yea or nay?
In favor.
Okay, thank you very much. Counsel Beck, can you back in? I never know, I'm not saying one there. Hello, old buddy? Can you read the resolution on F C M?
Thank you, Your Worship. Moved by Counselor McCabe, seconded by Deputy Mary Yankoff. Be it resolved that council approve the F C M funding, including a $4,760,740 loan with a 10-year term and grant of $714,110 towards the new net zero Rackley Point Road Depot, P I D 719591. And further, that the mayor and C A O are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
What a great resolution for Earth Week. Okay, questions called, all those in favor? Counsel Dron, yea or nay?
In favor.
Okay, sir, thank you kindly. Nine, zero? Yeah. Okay, and is that it for that? Oh, yes, thank you. Could you?
Amend the City of Charlottetown Remuneration Bylaw, Number 2021-R M N-01, to correct errors previously approved relating to council's remuneration and proceed with a 2% year salary increase. Be it resolved that the bylaw to amend the City of Charlottetown Remuneration Bylaw, 2021-R M N-01, be read a first time. Moved by Counselor McCabe, seconded by Deputy Mary Yankoff.
Charlotte Cary.
Okay. Be it resolved that the bylaw now be approved as a city bylaw, and that it be entitled to, entitled the City of Charlottetown Remuneration Bylaw, 2021-R M N-01, and that it be read a second time at the next public.
I'm not in favor of that, Mayor Brown.
Okay.
Thank you.
Eight-one. Counsel Dron, opposed? Okay. And is that it for that one? Okay, Public Works, where's our Public Works chair? Counsel McCabe?
Carry on.
Carry on. Go right to the resolutions?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Public Works Committee Resolution Number One, moved by Counselor McCabe, seconded by Counselor, I have no idea who this is. Is it Counselor? Counselor Beck?
Counsel Twill.
It was just a signature, there was no name typed out. Be it resolved that as per the conditions of the public tender Spring Tree Order, the submission of Dutch master nurseries in the amount of thirty-thousand-nine-hundred-and-five dollars plus all applicable taxes be accepted. And further, that the mayor and C A O are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Questions called. All in favor?
Yes.
Counsel Dron, yea or nay?
In favor.
Okay, sir, thank you. Go ahead to the next one.
Moved by Counselor McCabe, seconded by Counselor Beck. Be it resolved that as per the conditions of the public tender for two twenty-two-four forty-five-hundred cab and chassis, four-by-four work truck, the submission of Somerside Chrysler Dodge in the amount of a hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty dollars plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and C A O are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Counsel Ramsey called the question. All those in favor? Counsel Dron?
In favor.
Thank you. Okay.
Moved by Counselor McCabe, seconded by Counselor Beck. Be it resolved that as per the conditions of the public tender for supply and install two-way radios, the submission of pi-cap communication in the amount of eighty-six-thousand, eight-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars and forty-three cents plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and C A O are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Counsel Ramsey called the question. All those in favor? Counsel Dron?
In favor.
Nine, zero. Okay, could you please read the resolution? Thank you.
Moved by Counselor McCabe, seconded by Counselor Beck. Be it resolved that as per the conditions of the public tender for supply of ready-mix concrete and aggregate, the submission of C R M Ready Mix Limited in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand, eight-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and C A O are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Counsel Twill? Just one second, sir.
I want to know, again, I'll ask for the location where this company operates at.
Mr. Adams?
No, I asked you.
It should go through me.
Okay, well, okay.
You're going to follow the right process.
Well, sometimes I go to you and you defer it right away, so Counsel McCabe.
Okay, so I'm going to actually defer because.
Okay, thank you very much.
But it's the point. It's not, it's just to follow the proper process.
It's, it's up and down. Yes, chief engineer?
Your worship, through to Counsel Twill. C R M is located in Stratford.
Stratford. Road. It's on the Mason Road. Mason Road. Okay, thank you. Counsel McCabe, did we call, did you call the question? Questions called. All those in favor? Counsel Dron, yea or nay?
In favor.
Okay, thank you.
Moved by Counselor McCabe, seconded by Counselor Beck. Be it resolved that as per the conditions of the public tender for supply of hot mix, asphalt, tack, and cold mix, the submission of the Island Construction Limited in the amount of five-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand, seven-hundred-and-four dollars and sixty cents plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and C A O are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Questions called from Counsel Ramsey. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Counsel Dron?
In favor.
Thank you. Give them a call there, Kevin, Counsel Ramsey. Okay, do we have a report? Oh, no, we're not done yet. Counselor Beck has to go because of a previous engagement. Thank you, Counsel Beck.
I forgot to mention that the others choked last night.
Yeah, okay, we don't deal with hockey in here. Oh, utility resolution?
At least we made it.
Counsel Dron, do you want to speak to it first?
Yeah, I'd like to speak to it, Mayor Brown. This is the value-for-money audit of the Miltonville Well Field Development. This is the fiber optic. You know, I'm, I'm not in support of this resolution. I know we, we spoke on it at the committee. You know, there's so many questions about it. You know, there's a contract that's not signed. You know, there's so many, you know, obstacles for the, the contractor to jump through to try to complete it. I think there's just so many questions here right now that, you know, I'm, I'm not in support of this. If this is a, a big expenditure again, plus tax, it's, it's probably about seventy, seventy-five thousand. I think we can get to the finish line without doing this, but, you know, my name was on it. I, I wasn't asked to move it, but as chair, I'll, I'll talk about it and then, you know, vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Ramsey?
Yes? You're up. Oh, I'm sorry.
Counsel McCabe?
Thank you. I, I'm just trying to read the report and understand, so I know that you're saying this has to do with a previous contractor that started work. Is this to come in and fix up and finish work that was supposed to be done by a previous contractor? I'm not, maybe I'm just.
No, no, I'll, I'll explain what this is.
Counsel Dron, can we, can we put the motion on the floor first?
Sure.
Okay.
But I don't want to put it on the floor.
She has to read it.
Yep, we don't have to, it's not on the floor yet.
Yep.
So, I need, because he's not going to move it in.
Okay, so we need someone to sign it.
So, we had, it was seconded by Counsel Matard. We just need someone to move it.
Yep. Yep.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Yankoff, seconded by Counselor Matard. Be it resolved that City of Charlottetown proceeds with the value of for-money audit of the Miltonville Well Field Development Phase Three-B Communications Project, and accepts the bid submitted by Eagle Engineering and Consulting in the amount of sixty-five, or sixty-six-thousand, five-hundred dollars plus applicable taxes, and that the mayor and C A O are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Counsel Twill?
Is this, this, Tracy, can you please put that back on, please? Is this audit interrelated, has any connections to the contract that is yet to be signed by the City of Charlottetown, and again, the service provider? Is this all interrelated and all connected? That's my first question.
Do you have another?
With the proposed contract that is yet to be signed. I've been asking this question for the last ten months about the contract, so.
Yeah, so a contract has been signed.
It has?
Yeah, between W M and M and U C C to do the work. This audit, third-party independent audit review, is to look at all the work completed to date. Remember, it was a one-year deadline. We're now into year four, year five. It's not complete yet. Secondly, the contractor, or the subcontractor, U C C, want us to, they want the city to sign an I R U, an indefeasable right of use, which is for twenty-five years, and that will determine how our system will be used, because we'll be allowed so many strains in the strands in the fiber network, and we'll be a customer.
But, Mr. Mayor.
Second question?
Yeah, but, Mr. Mayor, the chairman of the committee obviously has strong reservations, is not supporting, supporting this, so, yes, my question is, to the chair, could you please outline, maybe in a point form, some of the concerns that you have with this, this value-for-money audit? What, what are some of the features that you oppose?
Counsel Dron?
Well, thank you for your question, Counsel Twill. This, this is a seventy-six-thousand-dollar expenditure. You know, we, we've hit some bumps in the road the last couple of years of getting this communication system together. The, the contractor, I believe, you know, has been picked on in such a way that he hasn't been allowed to work through the weekends when, when it would be available for him to be less traffic, to complete his, to complete his work. You know, I, I think, you know, it's unfair to him. He would like the contract signed, you know, before you start splicing cables and all these things. You know, the manager had, you know, confidence in him that we would get to the end of the line here, that we could get it completed with a major savings. Now, it seems that we're going out for someone to look at the work. I don't think we've ever done this before with, with any public works items, you know. I, I don't know, you know, you know, it's just been a, not a very good process to go through, and, you know, I feel the contractor's tried his best. Getting an echo there now, but.
Yeah, no, you're coming through.
So, he's tried his best, and, and, you know, I just think there's, you know, we haven't been, we haven't been welcoming to him. You know, we've been saying a lot of things that were not great for him or his company, you know, and I just don't find he's getting a fair shake. I mean, we all know that he ran against the mayor, so, you know, I just don't find that he's getting a great handshake on this.
Can I just, can I just?
Well, I mean, that's, that's the way I feel. This, this expenditure of seventy-six thousand, you know, that's, that's another delay that we'll have to wait and see, when, I mean, the, the manager could go out and, and take a look at what's going on here, and, and he's confident that he can get this completed without doing this, so, that's where I'm at.
Counsel Dron, I think you insinuated that this is a vendetta, a vendetta on my part. That is far, far from the truth. If that's what you think, then so be it. But I think I rise much higher than that when I address this issue. And I've been addressing this issue for the last four years at committee level. And this independent review is only, work doesn't have to stop, work can continue. This is to inspect what's in the ground, what has to be completed. You've agreed in the past that one year, two year, three year, now it's four years overdue, but to say that I'm using this as a vendetta, totally untrue.
Well, I mean, that's, that's, that's your opinion, Mayor Brown. I mean, I sit in each committee, I can, I sit in each committee meeting, and when you say things, you know, it seems that way. You know, the man tried to come in and talk to us, but, you know, we didn't want to listen to him. You, you were the one that put the notice of motion in. You're the one that's pushing this, and then all of a sudden, we come to a meeting, and it's my name on the resolution, so, you know, what do I expect?
You're, you're the chair of the committee, that's why your name was put on the, on the motion, that's standard procedure.
I wasn't asked, and that's why I wasn't doing it.
Okay. Counsel, Counsel McCabe?
Thank you. And I did sit on the water and sewer when this whole discussion started four, five years ago, where we were introduced and presented with this project that was going to take a year to complete, and it was going to happen, fulfillment. I thought we have, like, consequences, or, you know, people who don't fulfill contract obligations or tender obligations, that there's consequences we build into those tender packages four years later regardless. I know we've had Fiona, and we've had things that have come up, and I'm sure we've made reasonable exceptions for those kinds of situations that we've been faced with, but even quality of work with stuff left around the ground, and open holes, and conduit and stuff being left, were just kind of anywhere and dispersed along, it's not, it's not what is perceived as professional work. So, I'm certainly comfortable to have some sort of an audit done to make sure that this work we've have invested in is actually work that has said to be done. We're going to be held on the line, be accountable for some of this somewhere, and if we're not, then he needs to be, and we need to make sure the work's done properly.
Counsel Bernard?
Thank you, your worship. I recall when this was agreed to, too, when it was, we were all under the impression it was going to be a year. And I think we're, a lot of us were surprised, four years later, it's still not done. But the last I heard, it was ninety-nine percent done, or ninety-nine-point-five percent done, or what have you, so. I, I guess, first of all, I know Counsel McCabe alluded to it, but obviously, the contract needs to be tightened up, and I guess one of my questions is, if this was supposed to be done in a year, and it's year four, has there been extra costs the cities had to pay because of those delays? Number one. Has there been extra costs? Does anybody know that?
No. Oh, can I, can I answer that?
Yep.
So, we're, am I answering it?
Yeah, that's asking you, yeah.
Yep, so, we're under contract to get this completed for a certain amount of money. So, we're not into overages for this contract.
Okay.
If, if I'm correct. You know, with, he was working on the weekends, and, but then we said no, due to safety reasons, he wasn't allowed to work on the weekends? So, that's why there's been some delays.
Yeah, no, I can see that, but I don't know if it's four years, but anyway, I guess my point right now, when I, when I'm reading this for the information piece, what I'm seeing is, where did it go? To be fiscally sustainable by maximizing Charlottetown's existing footprint, infrastructure, and assets to accommodate a growing and changing population. Is that why we're saying that we're going to spend sixty-six thousand, and basically we're going to check over this guy's work? Because that, that's, that's not what, the resolution's not telling that to me. And if we're ninety-nine-point-five percent done, I'm not sure there's a need to spend near seventy thousand dollars to go over someone's work. We waited four years, might as well let him finish it if he's that close. Unless there's some information here that I don't know.
You're, you're correct on that. We're very close. The manager's confident in him. I, I certainly wouldn't know if his work is good or not, but the manager is confident. So, that's what I'm going by.
So, if, if the cable is put underground, which is my understanding, everywhere it's been underground, like Counsel McCabe said, there's been, there's been areas where it's, they've been waiting to make the connections. So, I'm not sure how another engineering company is going to come in and check. Anyway, I, to me, I, I'm not sure if the expenditure at this, at this time is, is worthy seventy thousand dollars, so.
Counsel Twill?
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I, you know, there's, there's many questions here with regards to this resolution. I think maybe, you know, be, to be prudent, before we, you know, pass a resolution or entertain a resolution to spend this kind of an expenditure, I think the best thing for council to do is become much more informed, so we can feel comfortable with whatever route that, you know, council would like to proceed in. I would like to move a deferral. I would like to move a deferral and bring in the gentleman that's working on this service, this, this communication strategy, and, and, you know, the infrastructure he's, he's putting in the ground. And that way, we can have him sit where Mr. Jenkins is sitting and ask him the questions and, and get a synopsis from him directly. That way, we will become much more informed. I mean, we could have a special meeting of council, forty-five minutes would tie it up. We'd be much better informed, because right now, we're, we're entertaining a resolution, and it's, I'm not trying to be critical, but we're guessing. Relotensive purpose, we're guessing, you know, is it ninety-five percent complete? Is it ninety-nine percent complete? Was there roadblocks in his, his attempt to finish the construction? I, I don't know. I don't know. So I'll move a deferral based on, suggest, a recommendation to bring, bring the contractor in, so we can ask him, all ten members of City Council can ask him questions directly. That way, we'll become much more informed and have a better insight.
Okay. Deferral's on the floor, I need a seconder.
I'll second it.
Okay. Deferral, so just speak to the deferral, Counsel McCabe, please.
That's fine, and I think that I, I can amend his deferral. I'm not interested in bringing in a contractor to present to council, but I'd certainly be interested in hearing from our manager of Water and Sewer on whether or not his, you know, where he is, where his confidence is, where the, how much percentage of the job is done. I don't think it would be appropriate to bring in the contractor. But I also, I'm confused in the report, if staff is that confident, Counsel Dron, why are they recommending this for approval?
Yeah.
Why are they asking, why are they recommending this audit for approval if they're that confident that we're ninety-nine point nine percent almost complete of a job that was supposed to be done four years ago?
Counsel Dron.
Well, I never said ninety-nine and a half percent. We don't have the numbers. That's why we'd like to see the contractor in, and the manager, and the contractor can sit here and explain where we at, where we are at, before we spend seventy-six thousand dollars.
No.
You know, let the two of them come in.
No.
Explain what it is, and what's in the contract that we have to sign to get it completed. That's what I'm asking.
Counsel Dron, at the last meeting, at the last meeting of your standing committee for water and wastewater, Josh presented the capital projects. Do you remember the communications project was ninety percent? Remember, I said, I thought it was ninety-eight percent? That was in the capital, capital projects update, so it was ninety percent. We were told ninety-five percent, ninety-eight percent, now we think it's ninety percent. So it was there.
Yeah, well, you should get, you should get the manager and Josh and the contractor to come in and explain it.
But Josh, they, they have a recommendation, as Counsel McCabe said.
Well, that's, that's fine. We're, we're talking about a deferral.
Yeah.
To get more information before we spend seventy-six thousand dollars.
Counsel Bernard.
That's what we're asking.
Counsel Bernard.
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. I guess, one of the things I was going to ask, and it doesn't sound like we know, but, but, because it was a while ago, we had a, we had an update here, and I can recall, it was like ninety-nine percent done, okay? And it was also, I believe the manager was given it, it also looked like it was going to be near another year to finish that one percent, which surprised me. That has to be six, seven months ago. So I guess, right now, it's probably better to defer, because I, I have a question. What is the new timeline? What is it, what's the new timeline to complete this?
Okay.
So you might as well get that information before you go spend this money.
Exactly.
Yes, Your Worship, I will be in favor for the deferral, and we're going to have Josh and the manager in, so all of council can say where we at. I, I personally don't think we should have, have to have the contractor in, because that could open up a, you know, it, it, like, the manager's the man running this, this department, and he should know, and he has lots of confidence, so he can explain to us why he's looking to do this and do that. So we get all the answers for the whole, for everyone in this room, so we know, and then we can go back and forth. Thank you.
Counsel Matar.
Thank you, Your Worship, to the Chair. I think, you know, the way I understood it at the committee level, that the value for add or value for money was just a little bit more than just knowing where we are with the project. I thought it was, was going to help guide us in a sense, too, of the, this potential contract, long-term contract that we were about to sign.
The IRU.
The IRU for twenty-plus years, to determine, did we get what was intended to be gotten from this project that was supposed to be a year in the making, and has gone over four years, and had some trials and tribulations? I only can speak to the information that's provided to me over the last year or so on the committee, so I can't speak to historically. But that was my understanding of the true nature of the, of that, was to ensure that, you know, the terms and conditions that were outlined in the original contract are being met, and everything is there, and the way in which we navigate forward would help to find if we signed into this IRU. And now, if I'm, if I misunderstood that, and that's not what it is, then I guess I would have to look at the deferral to get more information as to, because I, all I'm hearing here is to try to determine whether and how far away we are completing the project. So if, if we found out tomorrow the project is complete, do we still realize that we got the value add for what we paid for? That was my understanding. So to the Chair, if I misunderstood that in our committee level, please correct me.
Yeah, that, that was, that was one of the roads we were going down, Counsel Matar. But when this expenditure came out of seventy-six thousand dollars, you know, it made me think, well, you know what? We should have the manager in, explain it. And, and us sitting on the committee, we're not privy to the, the contract, exactly what's in it, and what's been said, you know, how far we are, what, what are we looking at? You know, all these questions should be answered by the manager and/or the contractor, but there's also a company that oversees the contractor, and, you know, we should have them in to, to tell us where we're at. They're the contractor to put up the bond or oversee him. So a person from that company should be sitting in front of us as well. If they're not confident of where we're at, then we can go out for this. But I'd like to see both companies sitting here with their manager, answering their questions.
Counsel Twill and Counsel McCabe.
Thank you, thank you, Your Worship. I, I, again, I think it's advantageous, I just want to reiterate, I mean, you know, voting of expenditure of this magnitude, to my mind, is irresponsible, and, and I ask for your support for the deferral. Bring the manager. I certainly don't have any hesitation of bringing in the gentleman that's doing the work. Again, we're, we're just going to learn a whole lot more, and we're better off making it a much more informed decision.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, I, I just wanted to reiterate what I stated earlier.
Thank you. Counsel McCabe.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that I'm, because just, Counsel Matar sits on Water and Sewer, so I just want to make sure that I'm understanding, so it's kind of to prevent future costs that could occur as a result of this contract that we're into, too. Is that what you understood? In, just in quick lay, okay. I'm not going to support deferral in this moment. If this, if staff is recommending that, that's what you assumed. We have a four-year over-the-date project. I'm more comfortable to bring this in and see what's going on and get this tidied up.
Okay. Counsel Bernard, wrap it up.
Yeah, I'm just surprised, sounds like what Counsel Dron is saying, is that, you know, not only do we have a contractor, we're paying for a, a project manager to oversee the contractor, as we do in public works project? And that's happening in this project?
Project manager?
Exactly.
No? Well, it's Murphy Cloud, it's the general, they're the general contractor, and UCC's the subcontractor.
So, and usually, there's a project manager oversees capital projects, and I'm asking is, so was there, like CBCL or some of those?
Yeah, Coles Associates.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there one overlooking this project?
Coles Associates.
That's who should be in, telling us what's going on, because that's what we're paying them for.
Okay.
Exactly.
Questions on the floor?
No.
No, 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 it's Coles Associates.
Nazmi Lowen.
Yeah, Nazmi Lowen is working for the contractor. Oh, Eleanor, just let, let Eleanor.
Thank you, Your Worship. I was just only going to clarify, like, this initially came from a notice of motion that was made, that council voted in favor of. So that notice of motion talked about a complete value-for-money audit of the project, which would provide a technical review of the project. Update report would include fiber installed, fiber, fiber spliced, fiber tested, fiber in service, outstanding construction segments, verification photos of each fault, and demarcation points. Also, project financial report, including evaluation of third-party investment, monetize of UCC contribution, review of the IRU agreement, that's the agreement that's still to be signed, and recommendations for the project/IRU agreement completion. So in this report, what staff did was, based on council's instruction, went ahead and prepared that RFP, and went out, and has now brought back that recommendation for the preferred consultant to undertake this work for you.
That's the staff recommendation.
Yeah, so that's what staff has just followed instruction. We found the consultant for you, and that is now presented for you to decide on the consultant. So that's the decision before you hear today. Thank you.
Thank you. We can defer. See if we want to go through.
Yes. We're going to hear that.
Okay. All those in favor of the deferral, please raise your hand.
Thank you, Eleanor.
Okay.
Where I can get it.
All, all those against?
Bobby.
Yep, Bobby, well, Bobby's for, Counsel Dron is for. Counsel McKennan?
I'm for the evening.
Deferral? Yeah. Okay, and again, I want to make it very clear, there's no vendetta here. I know that was mentioned, and I think that is not something that I take lightly, because that is not how I play politics.
Now, just, just a second now, let's clarify this. I never once said there was a vendetta. I just said he ran against you, that's all.
Well...
Never once did I say there was a vendetta.
The association was made, and that was clear.
Thank you.
Okay, we have another resolution. New business? Do you want to read that, please?
Thank you, Your Worship. Move by Deputy Mary Anka, seconded by Counselor McCabe. Be it resolved that effective immediately, and as recommended by His Worship, Mayor Philip Brown, David McDonald be appointed to the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee.
All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Can I have a question on this before it goes?
Yes.
Okay, like, I noticed we've been doing this a little bit lately. Is, is there a process that someone can apply for a different board that has a vacancy? Is there an application that they can buy or, or fill out, send it in?
Yep.
I know it's at the wish of the mayor to appoint people, but I'm just wondering, when, when people ask me about getting on a board, they ask, well, what's the remuneration, and, you know, what, what happens? How can I apply? So is there any clarification on that?
Yes, go through Human Resources. There is a form that can be mailed out, and it should be up on our website, but I would speak to the Human Resources Manager, Emily, Emily McLeod.
Okay, so they'd be interviewed, and, you know, everything would be through them.
It's not, it's, it's an application process, and it's submitted, and then they send them down to the office of the mayor, and I submit based on the information I read. And if you can look, it was asked by Counselor Norman Beck to give some background, and there's a summary of the applicant for this position on the second page. Do you see that?
Yeah, I see it.
Yep. Questions come?
Thank you.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Anybody?
Counsel Dron? Is he there? He's what? Is he still, Counsel Dron, are you still there? Okay, so we have seven zero. Okay, Counsel McKennan.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just before you, we adjourn, on the remuneration bylaw, could be a housekeeping thing, I'm not sure, but under resolve, it says we're vote a second, read a second time under the next public meeting. Should that not read the next normal, regular meeting or special meeting? Because public meeting is a public meeting.
It should, it's, it's, it's an open meeting.
So, okay, I just wanted to know about the wording, if it's proper wording. Okay, thank you.
Okay. And just before we close, that presentation that was put on by Ken Kelly last week at the Confederate, Charlottetown Learning Center, Charlottetown Library Learning Center, that will be available on community foundation, cfpei.ca, on their website, that'll connect to their YouTube, cfpei.ca, and it's called, "It's Complicated: The Ever-Evolving Urban Environment." Motion to adjourn.